This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, with that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton planning board for Tuesday, April 4th. All our members are appearing in person tonight, and we are recording the meeting. First item on the agenda is public speak. Is there anyone here to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? No one in the room. Looks like nobody online. So move right along. We have planning board minutes to approve from March 21st.
No, man, that's a motion to approve minutes from March 21st.
Second, all right, going to approve the March 21st minutes. All those in favor? Aye, oohs and stans. All right, moving right along to the hot topic of the night. A special permit hearing for Blake Underhill, seeking a special permit for an industrial safety and rescue business office and garage in a new building located at 2 East Street. Please name an address and walk us through what's going on.
I live 6 Oak Circle in Dover, Mass.
Can you put up that presentation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Rather than shut it. So yeah, I'm the owner of 2 East Street. I also own a company called Industrial Safety and Rescue. And that is the proposed tenant or why we're building this building. Industrial Safety Rescue started in 2012. Our headquarters is in Westwood, Massachusetts. We provide standby rescue teams. Those are basically off-duty firefighters, off-duty EMTs. We train them in what's called technical rescue, which is typical, it's a little different than the typical fire department training. And then put them on a job site where there'd be a confined space or they're working in some kind of dangerous environment. Where if rescue needed to happen, timeliness is the key part. So the rescue would happen in seconds or minutes rather than a longer period of time. We've grown a lot in Western Mass with customers being UMass, Amherst College, Coca-Cola, Smithfield Coos, Zalinas. And then a variety of contractors and general contractors, mechanical contractors have been hiring this out here. So one of the issues we have is that coming from Eastern Mass to Western Mass, we have to charge travel. If we don't have assets out here, the idea is to, it's now busy and a priority for us. We want to park an asset out here, develop teams locally, and that way we don't have to charge travel. We're more cost-effective and hopefully continue our growth. We are not on call, so our vehicles do not have sirens. We don't have flashing lights. We don't, we don't come and go flashing lights. If we're on a job site duty, our trucks have lights that we use in that application. But they don't come and go like an emergency department would. The purpose of the building is to house up to two vans. Equipment storage, potentially future office spaces, the area that continues to grow. We want to probably put a manager out here at some point. And then as we develop the teams internally, we'd be using it as a training space as well. You know, we don't train, it's not large classes. It's usually four, five people at a time. So it's again, and it's during the day, day operations. The existing building was built around 1950. It's CMU masonry. It was, I guess, originally built as a gas station and it's in partial collapse. That's the view from the side. I don't think I'm going to be surprising anybody by saying I think it's a bit of an eyesore. You can see from the ceiling that the, or from the sky view that the roof has collapsed. This is kind of the interior, some interior pictures of the existing conditions of the building. It's not very nice. And this is the existing plot plan where it's located. Little better view. Environmentally, so it was a gas station, 205. They did tank remediation and there's a whole EPA approved plan. It's been cleaned, I guess, from all that. I just did an asbestos survey about two weeks ago. There is some ACM in the roofing materials and some adhesive in the paneling inside the building. So as we do demo and reconstruction, we'll have to count for that and do that appropriately. The goal of the building, the goal is to kind of match other barns. So this is 219 East Street, and that's kind of my, like, I think that's beautiful. And that's what I kind of want to go for is a nice black roof and traditional barn red building and a nice kind of standard rectangular barn. There's several other barns on East Street. So again, it's trying to keep within the general feeling of the neighborhood. The proposed building would be about 35 foot wide, 50 foot long, and it's a foreign-looking building. Sidewall of 18 feet, so that would be mean a ridge height around, you know, 21, 22 feet. I haven't contracted with them. We haven't finished design. There's all these different building varieties. So we're still trying to figure that out, but that is, that is the goal size and kind of weight of the building. So far, I've been talking to metal building people, so it's all been like 22 gauge metal walls and roofs. Kind of a, not, not the typical corrugated, but kind of the, has some, has some ridge to it. But it's not like the, the way the ocean corrugated things. And at the Route 5 facing face, we'll have two 12 by 12 garage doors. Because again, the intent is to park vans in this space.
When you say the Route 5 facing, do you mean sort of the top of that drawing or the right?
This side, the right, the, yeah, the right-hand side with the arrows pointing there. So I guess the Samansky Avenue's facing side. So that's what this would look at. Obviously, those would be doors, not just big openings. And then on the East Street side, there'd be some, some kind of facade and potentially have some windows if there's a future office. The Wilder Ave view, so. But again, there's trees on Wilder Ave, which we'll, we'll talk through them in a moment. And then this would be the, the back view. But part of this is hidden by a berm. There's a berm on the back side, so probably wouldn't see the full, full height. For the site plan, basically, we're just using finished millings to put down. We have, you know, curving to keep it a defined parking space and a little walkway around the building just for, you know, safety of people coming and going. There's the trees, so the, the three trees that are on Wilder Ave and towards the back, we'd keep those. There's some scrub in the, in the, in the front. And as I saw today, I didn't include it in here, there's a tree that's actually up against the building. And that, that may have to go. So that would be the only tree that would be affected. All the other trees stay.
Hooray.
As for lighting, I mean, the, the general idea of the lighting is just kind of to light the specific area around the, the building itself. I'm very conscious of where I live about light pollution, so I, I want to be a good neighbor. And there's no reason that I need to blast light out into the greater world. So the, the idea is just to kind of provide safe lighting for the entry and exit points of the building and, and any, any safe areas that we need for employees to come and go. And that's kind of.
All right, planning board questions?
I'll go.
Sure. Jump right in.
Uh, okay. First off, you referred to the backside several times in your presentation. Is that the Wilder Ave side? Or is that the side near the Beverly Widdick property?
Yeah, that's the side on the, on the, the neighborhood though.
Beverly Widdick, and, or maybe you forget my pronunciation. I saw that on the plans, you were, you had some Arbor Vitae, that that's on the backside there. Are you planting those or are those?
Those are existing.
Great, okay. And I know here that you're saying you're trying to pick up your vehicles between 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM and are back in the office by 5:00.
That's the typical flow. There, as we were discussing, there are some cases where they may be coming later, you know, generally earlier. But typically, it's an eight-hour shift and they work in the area. So that's kind of the flow. Typically, projects start at 7:00, so they would need to pick up at important times to get there by 7:00.
And how many, when you're teaching a class, how many people are attending? Trying to get a sense of how many cars are going to be in here a lot?
Yeah, it's typically, for when we're training rescue techs, it's two or three techs and an instructor.
So we're talking no more than four, five cars?
Yes, four or five cars. And there might be, eventually, there'd be an office employee, an office manager, local manager, so.
Be that more regular.
Yeah, so I, I think the, in the outset, you know, the maximum you've got, you know, the two techs that are in the vehicles plus a class running in an office, you could have five, seven vehicles would be a crazy day. Kind of lots of people around, kind of thing. But that would be a max, I can envision.
And it sounds like that's mostly going to be like, those cars might all show up at 6:00 here, some slamming doors. People get in the vans and then they head out, and then it's a quiet site until the end of the day.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's no, there's not a retail space. There's no like active lives things. It's really intended as, as a secure place to, to put assets that we can utilize throughout this area.
So all the training is essentially around that, it's off-site and not on your site, or?
Well, potentially, in the beginning, we're going to put people in, in Westwood. We have got a large training facility with simulators and all of that. If there was additional trainings, people need refreshers and things like that, we could do that here. We do have a simulator trailer. So one of the ideas we have is we could bring the trailer, put it, park it in the garage and do training inside on the, on that simulator. If we're developing rescue local teams. But for us, the best-case scenario is we find people that are willing to come out to Westwood for, for a week. It's a one-weeks training, so it's five days, but that would be the goal. Because we have kind of the, the perfect scenario there. And this is too small a facility to, to build out what we have there here.
If you did a training on-site here, how many people would be coming to that? Is that like the four people that you were talking about?
No, yes, that would be an instructor and probably two to three techs.
Okay, so that's sort of a worst-case scenario.
That would be worst-case scenario.
For a training in a facility that basically is inside this building.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see any striping on the, on the parking lot. I'm assuming you're just planning to have them pull in like it was a normal residential lot here. You're not gonna, you're not gonna paint the lot at all, just put it in parking.
Yeah, the plan wasn't to paint just because there's, again, not really a retail space. We kind of wanted the flexibility of, you know, if we had five cars, you could kind of park everyone in. Because they're all working together. There's not a, so there's, there's not like a flow to the space where you need to make sure, you know, some parking can back out and come, come, there's not really comings and goings during the day.
And it's not up to the public, so you don't worry about, that's the issue. Go forward.
And your reference is going to be up, beginning, you're from East Street or a side over Route 5 side, where it's going to be?
The Route 5, so from Route 5, they pull into the Samansky Avenue for all of, I don't know, five feet and then make.
I don't want to be known enough, but it's not going to cross the street anywhere.
Yeah, so I just, I learned that about a couple of weeks ago.
You're just getting some copyright now there.
Yeah, so I, I think it might be easier to get techs now, which is, yeah.
What about weekends? Any stuff on weekends or is it largely Monday to Friday?
It's largely Monday to Friday. It's not unheard of to, to, to work on weekends, but it is very, very rare.
Okay. This is a pre-existing non-conforming lot due to lot size, correct?
Correct.
And it's 15, 546 square feet. Do we know what the, where it should be? Does anyone have?
I think the, the minimum was 25, 45.
45. And I also read in the preamble that, that there's the potential for, that there's a zoning board of appeals and a potential that the historical commission may need to be contacted, which seems odd to me given the state of the building, but.
I said, I, I would like to speak.
Yeah, so I'll start with historic commission. It's over 50 years old. So anytime we do demolition, they will review it. I think it's, it's pretty safe to say that this is not going to be an issue.
Hope so.
Nature's short of demolition force.
Yeah, I think they, a while back, actually looked at this building and decided it wasn't of historical significance. So the zoning board of appeals, that is more substantive. That's basically looking at, because the lot is non-conforming, the structure is inherently non-conforming. So to alter, extend, or change a non-conforming, non-residential structure, you need a special permit. So they all need to find that the change isn't non-conforming and that it's not substantially more detrimental to the previous structure.
Did you just say we need to find that or they need to find that?
They don't get the idea. So we're going to special permit for the business concept and the ZDA has to find that it's okay to deal with the non-conforming.
Yeah, so this is for the use.
Yes.
I have a question about lighting and the parking lot. Can I have poles up for lighting?
No, the idea is so to light just from the building. So the, we have kind of two, again, kind of keeping in the, the feel of the barn as the kind of, you know, lights that, the black roof. Reach out like that and just kind of light in front of those doors. And then light in front of like any entry-exit doors. If there was, you know, some lighting needed for the, the parking area, you know, January and December, it's pretty dark at 5:00. So you want to make sure that people can go safely.
Would you plan on keeping those lights on all night or shutting them down at, at circuit?
Yeah, we, you know, keep them or at, at least dim them. You know, we want to be respectful and there's no, we also want to make sure that anyone with maybe a mal-intent just knows that it's a live building and there's lighting. So whether it's motion-activated, I don't know if that's more, my neighbor has got a motion-activated light, which is, I'd rather it stay on than blink. So that's something I'd be happy to work out with the neighbors.
Okay, great. That's, that's excellent. Thank you. What about deliveries? Do you get any? Do you get any deliveries and?
Yeah, I mentioned UPS, you know, like UPS and FedEx, you know, we, we order equipment. Typically, it comes to our office in Westwood, but I can envision that we would direct ship things out to the trucks, to the people here. So I can, I could envision that maybe UPS or FedEx truck would come by every now and then.
Any sort of regular deliveries or anything like that that would be?
Yeah, no, there's no, we don't really have, you know, we don't really have consumables. And again, there's no, we're not selling, we don't have a resale aspect, so there's not selling anything out of it.
Any like unique ways or anything that the business generates to, you gotta do other than sort of office trash probably?
No, we've, we've been told, I think during the, in the, for the building department, we probably have to do like a oil-water separator because we're parking a vehicle inside the structure. That is the only thing I could think of.
Okay.
State that, how about solar roll? Plan for solar roll?
Yeah, we, I mean, if, if, if we really needed to, we'd plow. The nice thing we found at a previous facility we had is the, the mill tillings were pretty easy to drive on. If you had three or four or five inches of snow, it worked pretty well. Beyond that, you'd be needing to plow. So, you know, we want it to be a attractive space. We plow where we need to plow. And if, you know, if the tillings got pushed out, we'd have to shovel them back into the space and re-level the space. Right now, the, that, you know, driving through that area, so there's got a small lake, a small reservoir being built up there. So I imagine there's probably some ongoing maintenance that we'll have to be aware of, especially with the permeable and changeable nature of tillings. But we don't see that as being problematic.
Well, sort of like the painting of the sponsor of the parking space where it's not a public business. They don't plow the parking lot. They can't get that much of.
Well, yeah. When I first looked at this, I was actually concerned with parking. But because you're, especially with the Dunkin', but because you're coming onto Samansky and then coming out through that one controlled flow, as opposed to having four or five cars stacked up, maybe some are trucks or vans or responder vehicles themselves as they, you know, come in. Not that they're, you know, actively working there, but coming for training. Because you're coming out here and then going out, it handles kind of like backing up or, and it is, this is one of my concerns. I feel like it's okay the way it is without requiring striping. That's just me.
Yeah, and originally, like I was concerned with Dunkin' Donuts that, you know, people would use as overflow. But the East Street's busy enough. I think it just self-discourages people from parking across the street and running over to get their car.
I think a lot of the parking stuff, like I said, it works more a concern for public access and public safety. Whereas here, it's going to be them and their employees mostly, so it's, so it's the same level of concern, but.
I have no further questions.
So your plan, you've got a couple leaders, call them, they're cut. Is that actually a curb cut or is that where the curb's going to be installed, which would be?
Yeah, that would be the, the, well.
It's a curb addition, not the curb cut, right?
Yeah. Yeah, probably, where the, where the, the idea is where the existing berms kind of come to the ground, that's where we do it, but.
Where you would install the curb, okay.
Yeah.
The curb is traditionally an opening in a curb and not the actual placement would be the opposite of that. So just making sure that, well, looks like you're installing a lot of additional asphalt just compared to the imagery I'm seeing on Google Earth and your site plan. Is that correct? Are you going to repave and install additional pavement?
No, it, yeah, it would be the, 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 the fine billings.
Well, you're going to remove some grass and install additional impervious surface?
No, not impervious. It would be for all permeable surface. And that, the only areas that we'd be kind of changing is right in this area where the, to the, to the right of the, the building where it's just kind of scrub right now. This area would then, would be the, that parking area. So, so this scrub, like this scrub would be pulled up and, and this area where the berm comes, you can see the mouse. It's hard to see the mouse, I guess, from that distance. But the berm kind of comes down, ends about here, and we'd be putting curving around there and then filling this area in with that, the, the fine berm.
And is that pavement already on-site that we're looking at there?
This is, it's, it's such a mix and match. You have some pavement, there's a lot of just kind of broken up garbage and, and it's, it's a, it's a big mess. So yeah, that, the idea of all that would be coming up as part of the demo. So the site would be kind of scraped clean and then we'd be filling in. So there wouldn't, any asphalt.
They're removing the, the, the surface is what you're doing.
Right, yeah, yeah. The, the goal would be to remove like.
Rubbles, but yeah. And that's, that lands a lot bigger on this plan. And I'm sure the infiltration coefficient of that material is probably different than grass. And, you know, it's, it's a characteristic will change. I'd really like to see what your stormwater plans are for controlling any potential stormwater, especially with two streets and an intersection right there. Any stormwater that potentially could be leaving your site or how you can, how you plan to handle it, you know, so.
Okay.
Are you planning on closing off that opening on East Street? Is it, right now, like it is like a cut through, right? I mean, it's, it's, the curb is cut down on East Street and it goes straight through to Samansky?
Yeah, so the idea was to, to leave that open as a, as a second entry-exit point. It was, it was there, and so we just decided to, you know, kind of keep it, keep it as is. And, and as you said, this area is kind of the broken pavement we'd be breaking up. And then this area is in that picture above where we'd be, you know, cleaning up. And as you said, yeah, it would, I'm sure, yeah, it has a different berm.
Yeah, I mean, I don't doubt that it is one of those, like, I believe you, but just show me.
Yeah, I, I get it.
So there's that. And then any potential grading, you know, that's all kind of tied together. Definitely would like to see that information and just check that it's sound. What's going on with the back, what's like the back fence? Is that you and your parcel or is that your neighbor's?
It's my fence.
That's your fence, okay.
Yeah, it's on our parcel. It's their fence. We're fine with that.
Been up for 30 years.
Yeah, okay. We, we have no, basically, the, the building is set pretty much at the 30-foot setback barn. And that 30-foot area, we have no plans for, and it's a berm, so it's not really usable for anything anyways. So there's, it's, we're fine with it.
And how about signage for your business? What's it going to entail?
We have like our, our medallion. We'd probably just have our medallion on the.
Like that somewhere on the building?
On the building, so nothing, you know, street-based, you know.
Yeah, nearly.
The auxiliary.
No, wouldn't have a need for it. The only signage I was thinking or concerned about is if we needed to tell people that no parking for Dunkin' Donuts. You know, Dunkin' Donuts overflow.
Well, I mean, it's one of the reasons I was thinking about that entrance on East Street because I don't think people are going to come around that Samansky way. But if you've got that opening, it may, or it may be a way, people might start shooting across. I can't remember exactly where the exits line up from that, like that. That might be a little more of a pain for you than anything else.
Plus it adds complexity when you're pulling out, given the traffic in Dunkin'. You know, as I commented earlier, I felt eased that Samansky was your primary egress. But with that, what I've seen here, on Google Maps, you know, you can see that there is that cut. I'm not quite sure I feel that that's quite safe.
Well, one of the thoughts I had was that if you come in, if you, when you're coming in, you come down Route 5 and, and pull in. Coming out, if you're going northbound, this could be problematic, especially with the light. So if you were to actually exit out this way and then come into the light, it's actually a safer, safer route because there'll be a traffic light there. So it seemed to be just a safer egress point, and then this would be your main ingress. If you're going south, you'd probably use this as your egress as well, but that way you've got the options.
That sounds reasonable. Have you considered even signage to even state something along those lines? To even dissuade, you know, folks exiting a Dunkin' Donuts from, you know, doing, as described, a cut across your property and just having like outward-facing signs saying exit only, do not enter on that East Street side?
For us, it was, if we encountered the problem, we were then, you know, do some signage to mitigate it. I didn't want to, you know, signage isn't, even pretty signage isn't very pretty. So I didn't want to mitigate a problem that didn't exist. But it's definitely something that's, that's on the radar that we might have to deal with.
Just one more question about that. And I'm overall agreeing with what you're saying, you know, my concern, I think, is fairly minimal in this. But on Google Maps, I'm seeing on the East Street entrance that we're talking about, what I'm concerned about, I'm seeing a lot of vegetation and tree line. And I'm concerned if you are coming out of your property on that East Street entrance and to take a left, do you have the view? Is there, I mean, right now, it's in winter shot, so it looks like you can see it, but it's all trees and such. I don't know if anyone else has kind of seen what I'm seeing here.
Yeah, no, I do understand. I, I.
Is it black here?
I would definitely think that putting up a no-left turn sign is that, I, I don't envision much of a situation where we would need to take a left because that would bring us, no. I'd be more than happy if we had customers inside East Hampton, but I don't have, we haven't experienced that.
Looking at it again.
But I would, if there's something, I, I do agree. I do think taking a left out of the East Street exit would, could be problematic. So you got the island right there, the split is already kind of happening halfway through. And I, your, the visibility, because there's actually a little hill.
Yeah.
And also right there.
Right.
So, actually, I will say, that's how I, I stopped at the building before I came here. And I knew that I had to chuck a zip across the street, and these are big trucks. And zip is not actually, I would describe them that.
So I would say if it was not already an existing curb cut, Jamie, that your site distance question probably would be a little more, you know, what is an existing, established curb cut? And it always couldn't be further mitigated by just property maintenance.
And it's going to be like a private driveway, not a public, either road or, or passage. So like, you can hug the right-hand side as you're leaving and get a better angle in a way that you might not be able to do somewhere else. It, it's like that fine line between sort of like, is this a public safety problem or is it just going to be a pain for them?
Private safety.
Right, a private safety or a private pain there, sort of like the.
Right, a private safety or private pain. They're like sort of like the cut through thing, right? Where it's like, you're gonna. You're not gonna want people cutting through your driveway. So like that's, but you're gonna care about that way more than anyone else. Um.
So that's all I had about that.
And the underground storage tank, do you know what was held in that? Was it just septic or was that fuel oil or heating oil? Do you know what what product was in there?
I I don't know. I'm guessing I'm guessing it was fuel.
It was a gas station.
Yeah, so.
And and is so you're working with DP on that?
That was all room 1005. They have a whole environmental report um with the DP approved.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so that is all taken care of by the previous owner for free. Eric, you're doing what? No, I got.
No more questions, Danny? All right, anybody else have any comments or questions? Please come on.
I'm all for it.
You go.
I'm all for it.
Okay. Can you give us just your name and address for the record?
Frank J. Poli, Sixth East Street, East Hampton, Mass, USA.
Thank you. All right, so Danny, I'm gonna defer to you on this stormwater stuff because that's the only thing I can see that would go up. Sorry, Eli.
I've said a couple.
Yes, please.
Um one, the city engineer looks at this um first thing, is your do you know if your curb cut is over twenty feet?
He requested it be if we ever were than twenty feet. Um we can. We're we're very amenable to whatever.
Yeah.
Again, it's not a a um.
Are you talking about the Semensky Avenue one or the East Street one or the or the way the plan's sort of mislabeled a big curb cut and there's a big line that isn't actually a curb cut?
Right, yeah, it's a good question.
Well, I think either way, we could make the condition that all the curb cuts are twenty feet or less, right? It sounds like that's not objectionable. And it doesn't matter which one it is because I'm sure the concept applies regardless. Well, and the applicant's doing some site work.
Right.
So they can kind of feather that in as well.
Sure. And then the other thing I'll say is um this does not require stormwater permit. Um I'll leave it to your discretion about like how much you consider stormwater with um. The special permit criteria, but it because it's under ten thousand square feet of disturbance, it doesn't require.
Right, so it does have, we do have a requirement of the bylaw for consideration of drainage of surface water. So it's sort of like. I think warrants a conversation, but I don't know that needs a full stormwater analysis. Personally, but. Danny, again, this is your. Um or do you want to put like? I mean, as long as all the the runoff stays on site, I guess it's not that. So that's what I'm saying. It's like we can just condition it like some. Stormwater stays on site and whatever it's doing on site, it doesn't impact any of the public. You know, I'm just thinking that intersection even. Yeah, just kind of thinking it's running off ponding.
Yeah, it seems like, yeah, I can I can understand. I can appreciate that uh. For whatever reason, me, my property dumping water in the street could be a concern and and that.
Well, and then when it becomes a problem, it's conditioned, then we have some sort of way to go back to and be like, hey, you gotta fix this.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Individual droplets of rain don't usually pose a problem, I think, depending on how the berm works at the top bill.
Yeah.
If everything works as you've described, it should never be an issue.
Yeah, and if it is, I I think there's a, you know, there's a enough. Land around it that we can find driveway to do something to to deal with that.
Yeah. That's not running the uh Route five anyway. I mean, the the state, you'll be dealing with after the city stamp.
Right, well, it's basically right there, but well. Um the only other thing I was thinking, I'll just open this up, what people think, but the training module sounds like it's gonna be inside. That was the only thing I was thinking about for a condition rather than putting what is essentially another structure on the property that would basically keep it inside. The building, but I don't know if that's an issue or not. Well, I I was kind of thinking, Jesse, you know, it seemed like describing as if this were to go up initially, you know, it's mostly off site work with very minimal. Interior onsite work, but there's a potential if this goes the way Westwood goes, there may be simulated trailers. To me, it turns into a bigger business.
I agree.
A different business. So I I'm comfortable um. With approving this as stated for this kind of first phase of this initial start of the business, but would like to at least, you know, have some mechanism to review should expand. So what what if we were to say that all the training would take place inside the the structure we're approving and that way I think it would. Put a limit on there. There's only so many cars that could park there. And then that way, because I and I also think it does, we're approving this structure and concept, but you can see a scenario where there's. You know, not that you're gonna do this, but four training trailers that are set up all over the lot, right? There's people coming and going and that made me a little nervous too, but. I think we limit it to the building, then it probably restricts it generally anyway. I'm comfortable with that. And I I will second that, you know. It seems like traffic isn't an issue because of the way the business is described to be run. Whereas if it, you know, changes and grows and more people are coming onto the site. Traffic may or may not need to be evaluated down the road as well. So I think the nature of what you described, I'm comfortable with. Well, and I think, I mean, one of the things I was thinking and Blake, let me know what you think about this, is sort of conditioning this that, you know. Storage of two vehicles or sort of like limiting the number of vehicles that we stored onsite. Um and then I'm trying to think of a way we can describe sort of um training in a way where. You're allowed to sort of do this training and potentially even do more of it as it expands, but that it doesn't turn into a, you know, twenty four seven training facility, which I think we all agree with. Is very different than what we're looking at here. So maybe it's like incidental trainings or something like that, where it's sort of like still an accessory used to the. Storage of the vehicles as like a base and it doesn't become a training facility.
I can answer the question about that. I I mean, I I tend to agree with both of you of it. I mean, especially with the role of concept, but I also really don't like to, and human businesses either, or make things difficult for a business. Are you sure there's never a chance where you might like have the garage open and be halfway out and. You know, and 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 have some sort of thing going on where you're, you know, I don't know, you need sunlight for the train. I just want to make sure that we're not putting a rule on it's. That's creating a a a situation where you're not actually able to function.
I was gonna say the training trailer, not that training can't take. I mean, I imagine they might be, you know, showing somebody something on a vehicle and it's parked out front or you're doing, you know. Beautiful, let's go do.
Right.
If you are training in front.
Right, right, right. And and to me, it's the train, it's that training trailer that you described because that's where I can see. You know, your neighbor, you wake up one day and there's four container ship containers parked in the driveway, right? You're like, what's going on?
And I think we're sort of um. Cutting corners is not the right word, but like we're we're there's a little bit of leeway. We've talked about like smaller moving parking lot because it's not open to the public and it's a few cars in and a few cars out. But if you're doing, we've got a morning training session for sixteen people and an afternoon and we're doing Saturdays and Sundays. Just something that we've got some way to like.
What's the language on that? I've got the other three conditions, but training trailer, what what?
So you you referred to it as a training trailer, right?
Yeah, I've got a um.
Simulator.
Yeah, simulator. Basically, it's a twenty two foot long. Trailer, like a almost a car carrier trailer. It's got a steel deck on top that you can you can open and it's got um. There a chamber and and tubing and all inside, so it it acts like a confined space. So it's. It's like you're doing a manhole entry, but it's a there's cameras and it's set up so it's be safe. We use that typically for when we do onsite trainings at different locations. Um I was just saying that because we. If if we, you know, there could be a potential, put that here for for doing for training the rescue techs.
Um so if we do, and again, I'm thinking along James's line, I'm not trying to jam you up inside changes. So like if you if we condition it that the training, you know, the. Training simulator would always be stored inside the structure. I mean, you don't want to bring that back and forth from Westwood or wherever. So like if you've got that stored in bay one. It might mean that if you have two vehicles there, you're parking one of them outside, like so I'm just trying to think of these things and maybe that's the thing where you come back and ask for a modification like. Holy cow, we want to keep the simulator out here all the time. Can we, you know, agree to put this next door or whatever, but.
Yeah, I would I would think it's uh I don't have a problem that if you said. Truck or trailer or whatever is parked inside the vehicle.
Yeah.
Inside the pelican me. Um and if we wanted to do something beyond that, I don't have a problem coming back and saying, hey, we now have this.
Or a lot of hypotheticals into the future here, right?
Right.
Things are going very well for you, so you don't mind coming back on a.
Yeah, now we're gonna tandem, we're gonna double tandem park vans because we're exploding. Things are great.
Okay.
Yeah, that, you know, I guess good problems to have.
Yeah.
Um and then uh I.
Yeah, because we're we're taught, right? Like we want to give you flexibility, but we also don't want to turn around, you know, in eighteen months and people are like, what's going on? It's like, well. Blake seems so reasonable. It seemed like those are gonna be small and now it's a twenty four seven operation.
Right, and I I can definitely.
Yeah, I think it's like.
Yeah, that's that's not the intent. So I'm fine with working, but it is.
This could really have an impact on that intersection that's been studied.
Yeah.
Signaled. So that's why I think use the language, the training is still incidental and secondary to the primary purpose or something like that, you know, where you're still using it largely to store your vehicles. As a base out here as opposed to the training facility that we all take sort of park our cars at.
Yeah, so I don't want to be like, you know, beautiful July day and we're doing training.
Yeah, no, we can't stand outside. James asked that question because that was not what I was. If training can happen anywhere, it's this simulator that to me feels like it might change the character of.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Can I run these? So I have them so far by you so we can make sure that they're working correctly. Um less than twenty feet on all curb cuts. All stormwater shall be managed on site. Uh that's number two. Number three is uh storage of no more than two vehicles to be stored inside uh with the uh trailer also stored inside.
Yeah, you want to say simulator, trailer or something?
Storage of no more than two vehicles.
We did, we also have um probably want to keep it as a trailer because.
Okay.
We do have.
You have other trailers.
We have other trailers too, just so it's.
Maybe we only condition that the vehicles be stored inside or just on the property because they park a van in a space. I don't see. That's the thing. I don't care where the the vehicles are.
So get rid of the storage of no more than two vehicles and just say the trailer must be stored inside.
Yeah.
Trailer must be stored inside.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Um all right, let me just run down the list of our criteria before we move on to anything before. So first is conformance of provisions of the orders of the city. Hampton Generalized Massachusetts Regulations, I think we've covered that. Um protection of city amenities and embodied properties, minimizing any detrimental offensive uses, destruction, illegal or import natural scenery or stored features. We've done that. Minimization of traffic and safety impacts, cover that. Methods of disposal of so direct nuisance range of surface and subsurface water. Um protecting wetland water sheds, aquifers. Mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources. Uh prevention for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles, parking, lighting and internal traffic control. It's bringing the development of the existing landscape, minimizing the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed. Uh consistency of the development with respect to setback area placement of parking. Uh added to suit measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater. And ensuring that these will not constitute a nuisance. So I think we've covered all this. Any planning board members have any further comments or questions?
I have to ask a question. There's stormwater condition. Seems big. I mean, surely there will be some runoff into the street. Like, what are we really asking for?
Is there gonna be runoff into the street? I mean, I imagine there'll be like incident, I mean, at some point like the edge of the property, right? Like it may not all be captured, but I think that. What I'm envisioning is that it's something that if it if if there's a problem, it will be because this isn't being complied with.
Yeah, these work by complaints, right? So if the condition we have stormwater must be managed on site and someone's like, I've got a river. And they can go to a building inspector and say.
But so Eli's point is that I guess that, you know, if there's a cup of water that's drizzling out one side, you're technically not compliance with that condition. And that's not the need. So it's doing, you know.
Put a hard number in it, you know?
No, what if we're what if we put a word about reasonable or something like that? What if, how do we? Or could describe a point source instead of like laminar sheet flow um to get that in any degree, but. Generally speaking. If you were, this doesn't apply to this, but like a mass general permit, stormwater. Technically, you're not allowed to have any water discharge on your property. I, you know, engineer a lot of facilities that are able to do that. Um but, you know, like, like what you're saying, if there's just a small light stream of water coming out the driveway. A sheet flow or something along those lines, that's fine.
Why don't we use the word excessive, excessive?
Well, but I think I think Danny's point before is right, like they're they're doing all this groundwork anyways, so. When they do it here. Essentially, you could handle it with like a six inch berm or slate creating to capture stormwater on the site.
Yeah, no, I think it's reasonable. I just hope that that's um what we're asking that to do.
So it sounds like where your explanation should put in some new kind of a berm or mitigation.
Well, I do think you're gonna do a lot of site work and change from grass to an engineered material that is claimed to be impervious. This shouldn't really be an issue, but should it? Oh, be more pervious or get silted or something happened and all of a sudden. This intersection's flooding or it's flooding in that changing of seasons where and it turns into ice or creates ponding or people, you know, driving through large puddles. Um that's all. The site wasn't changing kind of character in terms of the material um, which I know I understand it has to because it's in such disrepair. Then it wouldn't really come up as a question, but. Um, you know, I do see this all the time on what I do, do well meaning and and changing materials and then you create. Some like uh other problems even with with goodwill and trying.
Yeah, no, I don't. I don't doubt that. I just want to have a clear criteria and thing we're asking for.
Yeah, I understand that. Um without giving you like cubic feet per second or gallons or something like that, it's kind of difficult. Um. Well, I think that what we're saying is that with the site work ingredient that's gonna be done, it should be relatively easy to keep the stormwater on site. Right? Should not discharge it. Shouldn't be. Yeah.
So grading and site work should have that goal, is that?
Well, I mean, I think if we just say that the stormwater has to remain on site, then and then again, I guess if he gets out there and he talks to someone and they're like, oh, man, we can't do this, then he can come back. But I tend to agree with Danny that that should be relatively easy and we're not asking them to bring people on that aren't already gonna be coming on and working on it, so.
Okay.
Like mostly Blake will have to tell the contractors or whatever, like, remember, we're not gonna just dump out into Route five.
Yeah.
Fortunately, it's already a flat pad site. It's it's really, we're talking a few inches of relief just at the kind of extent of your site should do the job.
Alright.
So Blake, are you comfortable with this connection we've talked about? Okay, anybody else have a public comments question? I'm gonna make you come up. You got it. We got millions of viewers.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I can ever get ready.
We have millions of viewers.
I gotta go up there. You go up. I just said, I'm all for this. That's it. That's not a problem. The problem I was gonna ask you guys is who's gonna be responsible for all the crazies? As soon as voting season starts because they used to take where he wants to go, they used to take that. They used to take where the water pump station is, they park there, they park on the electric company lawn, they park on the.
And they've been getting ticketed a little more recently, but that is gonna be a Blake problem. And that is when he's gonna lead into the signage that he really doesn't want because it's gonna look ugly, but he might have to deal with that, especially on weekends. When there are people on site.
Good answer, but we do need your name and address.
Yes, good call.
Uh Robert Smith, forty seven Wilder Ave.
Thank you.
Don't look for my health, you ain't gonna find it.
Underground. Any other comments or questions who are bored? All right.
And are we ever doing this before the ZDA special permit?
We can't say contingent on approval by the.
Yeah, they're gonna have to.
The fourth condition.
Yeah, I would say that's we can make it an explicit condition. I mean, wait, I don't think we can do it. I don't think he can do anything with our permit until he gets the stuff from the ZDA anyways, but.
Okay.
And I think we have our regular language anyways, that it's contingent on any other approvals.
Yeah, okay, just to refer to you.
Yeah.
So uh condition one, contingent on approval by the ZDA. Condition two, with all curb cuts less than twenty feet. Edition three, stormwater shall be managed on site. Edition four, the trailer must be stored inside. I motion to approve this special permit uh for the property at two East Street.
I also have a few things to say.
Oh. Come on, please.
I think we already talked about this. I I own the property right next door.
Can you give us your name and address?
My name is Sherry A. Malon, under the two Semensky Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
And I it's property right next door and when the Oxbow was there, they did something with the water. They turned off their water. My water went off.
What was what was the Oxbow? Is that the?
The building that was there.
That gas station or whatever was in that truck?
It was an Oxbow, so it was sports. It was a gas station and turned into a sport shop.
Okay.
So you have a good standpoint apparently. It was a sport shop, a bait shop. Um so they turned off, you know, we were we were close and they turned off their water. My water was gone off. So I would say, please turn your water back. I don't know what you turned. As long as, you know, there's some configuration with the water system, I don't want to have to pay for it. That's all.
But I'm not even sure how we would condition that, but I think. And I would, I I would say. Whatever condition you're living in, I'm not gonna make it worse and or never make it, yeah, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
I appreciate that. And that's it. Just keep it on my dream.
Oh, yeah. All right, thank you.
That was, thank you.
Great job. Great job, yeah.
Jesse, there was a, I'd like to amend my uh conditions and my motion.
My gosh, I cannot.
Sure.
Hopefully be um sometime.
Guys, hold on, we're nice. Uh, Jerry, uh, we're still going. The mic is just, you know, maybe they're hurting us. It was twenty feet or more or less at a bless.
Um, okay, very, please amend that to twenty feet or less is the actual language of the conditions.
Directly, yeah. Um, okay, so we have a motion.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. All right, uh voting to approve the special permit with the conditions. Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
The hoes abstaining. All right. We will work on a decision. Eli, what's our timeline for a decision, we think?
Uh I'd say by the end of the week.
Well, so maybe. All right, uh, that's it. Best of luck. Thanks to the folks for coming out and.
Thank you. You guys are doing a great job. I tell you, I never come here, but you guys are the best.
We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that's, I had.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.